Madam Clerk, if you'd call us back in, please, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Jimmy Clanton. Councilmember Rob Turner. Councilmember Jasmine Cobble. Councilmember George Turner. Councilmember Diana Doma. Mayor Jason Leary.
Thank you, ma'am. We stand for the invocation. If a councilman, Rob Turner, would do us a favor, please.
Before we pray this afternoon or this evening, I would like for us to have a moment of silence for one of our citizens who just briefly passed last week. It was sudden passing. He was a member of the Film Commission and a very vital, important part of our community, Mr. Todd Mohammed. So just for a few moments, can we just have a moment of silence, just in his memory? Father, we thank you for the opportunity that you give us every day to breathe, to live, and have our being. We thank you again, as we come together, as a unified, solidified front, strategically moving forth to do those things for the people of this great city. We thank you for our counsel, for our mayor, for those staff members, and all the citizens of this great city, that we come together with one mind and one spirit, now being led by your powerful spirit. So now, Father, we thank you that you've given us another opportunity to do the business of the people. As we worship you, we work with them. So we thank you, Lord, for this evening. We thank you for the memory of Todd, and we bless you as you send comfort to their family, his family. And we worship you forward. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, counsel, we're gonna go to the approval of the council agenda under appointments. We won't be making a development authority appointment this evening. That's gonna come off. The city manager, madam clerk, anything else you have?
No, sir.
Okay, number five on the new business?
Yes, we're gonna remove number five under new business transportation master plan contract award.
Okay. All right. I'll take a motion for the approval of the city council agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve city council agenda with the removal of number ten, the development authority, and the removal of number five, transportation master plan contract award.
Properly moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's been approved. The approval of the July eighth, two thousand nineteen, city council meeting minutes. I take it, counsel, that you've had these for a week or so now. Do you have any changes or suggestions? Being done, I'll take a motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I make a motion that we approve the July eighth, twenty nineteen, city council meeting minutes.
Properly moved?
I second it.
And second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Seeing none, minutes approved. The city clerk, Mr. City Clerk, madam city clerk, I apologize. If we have no presentation, we'll go into public comments.
Ms. Bay Cofield?
Good afternoon, everyone. As you can see, I have pulled from the charter the rule about taking over things. And as you know, on August twenty ninth, when I filed my complaint about these trees, you had, in fact, a city court, you had a judge, and you had previously issued some city, some code enforcement charges. My application was, in fact, filled on a City of Stonecrest code enforcement. So I think that we might need to take a second look at that. The other thing I wanna address is that in an open records request, I had asked for photographs from this location. I was told that the city had taken no photographs. But when I read the documentation, I saw that they had obtained Google Earth photographs, which, for the purposes of a open records request, are considered photographs. And I was also present when code enforcement took photographs. I was standing right there. I don't know what this is all about, about this, that something, now you're saying that you didn't have authority, and it took two years to find out that you didn't have the authority to handle this. I have gone back to DeKalb County and asked them that if you don't have the authority, that they need to take the authority. I am deeply troubled by some of the comments that were made against me, especially that I was feuding with the neighbor, when in fact I gave you proof that the neighbor was actually the aggressor in the matter, and that he had been issued a formal written criminal trespass warning. There were also statements that were made that were untrue. And personally, I believe that those statements were made deliberately, that they were known to have been untrue at the time that they were made, and that they were made to embarrass me, to humiliate me, and that they remain untrue as of this moment. Thank you very much. You have a blessed day.
Because we haven't said the statement before, I wanna make sure that everybody's clear on this. If you have a public comment, and you wanna pass out any agenda items or any public comment items, please deliver them to the city clerk first. She will then examine the items, and then she will see fit to then give them to us.
Ms. Renee Kell?
Hey, everyone.
Evening.
I just wanted to find out or just inquire about the moratorium that was discussed some months back about the cell tower. Is has a, or any cell towers, has a moratorium been done? Because Attorney Tenmark said it takes thirty days. So I would like to know if that's been done. Also, I just want you all to know, we still want that cell tower removed. It should not have never, it should have never been put there, because it is detrimental to the community. So we will be working on that. And hopefully, you all will help us remove it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dave Marcus?
Good evening, y'all.
Evening.
I just wanna say a couple of things, one of which is, I drove down Covington Highway today and was very pleased that apparently code enforcement has taken care of most of the weeds and litter on lots on that highway coming into our city, something I had asked them to do a couple of weeks ago, and most of it's gone. I have issues, some issues with code enforcement and how fast they were, but this has been a definite improvement, and it's a good one. I also came back from vacation to read in the Atlanta Journal Constitution that there's some problems with land acquisition in the city. Now, I would like the city to be doing everything right. I'd like you all to do it right the first time, please, whether you have experience in it or not. But if somebody thinks something is doing it wrong, you don't need to get your name in the papers and complain about it. Investigate it first. Find out what's going on. I know that somebody said any publicity is good publicity. But particularly for those of you who are running for office, you cannot promote yourself by tearing down your opponent if that makes our city look bad. And that's, I don't know how you do it otherwise, but please find a way. Because I am sick of seeing newspaper articles where a council person is quoted or mentioned and is not saying something good about our city. So my challenge to each of you is, in the next thirty days, get your name in the paper for something good for the city. Thank you.
There are no more public comments.
Thank you, madam clerk. We're gonna move to first public hearing with number one, RZ nineteen double oh five, land use petition, twenty-one ninety-three Pinola Road, R one hundred to C one. Are you going to Mars, Mr. Wheeler? Oh, just messing with you.
No comment. Good evening, counsel. The first case that's brought to you this evening is RZ dash one-nine-nine-dash-zero-zero-five. The applicant is Mr. Jose Alia with Alco Engineering. The applicant is requesting to rezone two-point-six-nine acres from R one hundred to C one for the development of sixteen thousand five hundred square foot commercial development. Just wanted to make a note, in your packet, it does say for twenty-two thousand eight hundred square feet, the applicant has revised his site plan. And I'll get to that, explaining why he submitted a revised site plan. The background information on this property, the subject property as kept is original zoning of R one hundred. Currently, the property has a twelve-hundred square foot single-family home located. The property can be described as even throughout. There's a mixture between hardwood and young hardwood trees on the property. Again, the current location of the subject property is thirty-one, twenty-one ninety-three Pinola Road. It's approximately nine hundred feet to the north of the Covington and, Covington and Pinola Road intersection. The surrounding area includes auto parts stores, Church's Chicken, Dunkin' Donuts, Murphy Gas Station, LA Fitness, a Shell gas station, and a Waffle House. Also located to, to the west of the subject property is a proposed, well, actually, is a construction of a Belmont Town Homes, which is a hundred and sixty-seven townhomes. Located to the east is, is the Shopping Plaza, and located to the northeast is a single-family residential development. These, again, is just a picture of the existing conditions. The star is representing where the subject property, again, located to the west is the Belmont Estates. Again, located to the south is the commercial development. Again, located to the east is the single-family residential subdivision. The proposed development, this is the site plan, the applicant is highlighted in red is the proposed sit-down restaurant. He'd read, re-revised that plan for four thousand five hundred square feet for a six-down, a sit-down restaurant. The applicant is the owner of a Mexican restaurant in the current Shopping Plaza, where I believe that is Kroger. Don't quote me on that. I think it's maybe Kroger. It's in the Shopping Plaza or Walmart. I apologize. I shouldn't have known that beforehand. Highlighted in blue is the twelve-thousand square foot worth of retail which the applicant will lease out to individual business owners. Located, highlighted with the green arrow is the proposed access which the applicant will tie into from the existing drive aisle. In the orange is the proposed stormwater pond which the applicant intends to create, to manage for excess stormwater runoff. This is the proposed elevations, which the applicant is intended to, to develop the site by. The proposed elevations include a natural stone, brick, and ephes. Again, this is just the proposed elevation which the applicant will develop the site by. The Stonecrest zoning ordinance lists eight factors which you will make your recommendation either to approve, approve, deny, or defer the application. Staff has taken the liberty of actually review each standard, and actually, I will go through those standards for you this evening. The first standard of review, again, is as shown in the, whether the zoning proposal will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent nearby properties or properties. Staff believes that the proposed use is suitable of the nearby properties as the applicant, as the, as the, as the subject property is located by mainly high-density, medium-density residential and commercial development. So, so a C one zoning would be suitable in view of the develop, of the local, of the other properties. Again, this is, again, just showing you the staff's analysis. Again, this is, will show you again, the commercial property located to the south of the subject property. The next standard of review is whether the zoning proposal is in conformity with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan. Policies of the, well, I apologize, let me back up. The future land use character area for this property is suburban. One of the policies of the suburban character area is to encourage non-residential, non-residential development at a small convenience, good service, to meet the needs of the surrounding community. Also, small-scale developments shall be limited to the qualifying intersections of collectors and above. Pinola Road is a collector and above. And since the applicant did revise his site plan to be sixteen thousand five hundred square foot, staff believe that is adequate use for the surrounding properties. The next standard of review is whether the zoning proposal will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby properties. Staff, again, believes that the proposed commercial use would not, would not have a negative impact on the adjacent nearby properties. Again, highlighted in green, the applicant intends to create his drive out to an existing drive out, not to increase any kind of traffic issues for the area. The applicant intends to, basically, to use that, so therefore, so there won't be any backup along Pinola Road, trying to get in and try to get out. Our engineer, city engineer, did review and did agree with the, with the proposed design. The next three criteria, I will just kinda go over briefly. Whether there are existing or changing conditions affecting the use, use and the development of the property which gives supporting grounds for either approval or disapproval of the zoning. There isn't one, there isn't any conditions to support either, either approval or disapproval of the application. Whether the zoning proposal will adversely affect historic buildings, sites, districts, or archaeological resources, there are any on the property. Whether the zoning proposal will result in the use which will or cause excess verse on the use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. Originally, staff did recommend deferral of this application due to the original design had excess of a hundred trips during peak hours. Therefore, staff always recommend a traffic impact analysis to do, to do, to research, I'm sorry, to do extra reviews, just to see if there are any kind of traffic mitigations that are required for the commercial development. So the applicant decided to go back and revise his site plan to, 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 to get his traffic, traffic, his trips under a hundred peak, a hundred trips per hour. So therefore, a traffic impact study is not, is no longer warranted for the property. There will be no excess use along the, the utilities or, or schools as well. Oh, and there's also one more, which I've got to add on to my, my PowerPoint, was the last criteria. Use one moment. Whether the zoning proposal will adversely impact the environment or surrounding natural resources. Again, it's in your staff report, it's on page nine. Again, the applicant is intending to, to create a stormwater detention pond to catch, to catch excess runoff, so therefore, it won't affect the adjacent nearby properties located to the south. The applicant intends on connecting into an existing stormwater drain, which is, which, which the Belmont Estates has access to, which they are working on negotiations, so he can tie into that. Just to let you know, again, when this application came before the planning commission, staff did recommend deferral of the application due to not having a traffic impact analysis. So it's, planning commission did recommend deferral of that application. Staff has now gone back and saw the revised site plan, and therefore, staff would take away the recommendation of deferral. Again, I probably said that incorrectly. Staff recommendation is not to defer, but to approve the application. But planning commission was, again, still recommended to deferral on the, on the, on the understanding that they were requesting for a traffic study. Traffic study is no longer warranted since the applicant revised his site plan, putting the trip generation under a hundred peak per hour. I mean, not per hour, but during peak hours, a hundred trips during peak hours. Okay?
So the planning commissioner approves it because of that?
No, 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 I don't, I don't know if they approved it or not. Again, I'm just explaining you that they recommend deferral, 'cause they understood that staff was recommending a traffic impacts, impact analysis. Applicant decided to go, applicant, instead of doing traffic impact analysis, they decided to reduce their square footage, so their trip generation wouldn't exceed a hundred trips. So therefore, staff is saying, well, there's no need for a trip, a generation after this. So that's what I wanted to make.
They reduced the amount?
They reduced the square footage, yes.
Got it.
So it was right underneath a hundred, a hundred trips. Staff did recommend a list of uses that should be prohibited from the, from the property. I won't go through all that, but they are in your packet, and they're on the city's website, if anybody wanted to review. The applicant is not here, but Alco Engineering is here instead. Do you have any questions of staff?
What's the relationship between Alco Engineering and the applicant?
Alco Engineering actually did the revised site plan for the, for the applicant.
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
What does, help me understand how reducing the square footage guarantees a reduction or decrease in the traffic, since it was originally residential, and now it's commercial?
So can you say it for me one more time, just to make sure I understand?
Okay. The revised site plan
Yes, ma'am.
was with a reduced square footage.
Yes, ma'am.
And with the reduced square footage, it was originally residential. I think it was R one hundred? Was it, was it R one hundred?
So the original, so I'm, I don't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry. So the original, the original site plan, so that was, that was gonna be proposed commercial development based off of the square footage of the property. Again, the trip generation is based off the square footage, and again, I don't wanna speak, 'cause I'm not a traffic engineer, but this is from how I understand it. The square footage determines how many, how many trips, depending on what type of development, will be generate from that, would, would generate, how many trips will come into the property. So by reducing the square footage, there should be a less amount of people actually coming to the site. That's from, just from a high-up area. And I can't explain the details of that. I have the engineer who can explain that. Even our own city engineer would explain it as well, but I don't want to not give you the correct answer, but that's just kind of from a high level, from how I understand it.
And I guess my question is, how do we know for a fact that we're gonna get the traffic under the, what, what, what was it, one hundred?
Yes, a hundred trips.
Yeah, because I know you, they said because of the square footage reduction, there's no traffic study required. And so my question is, why wouldn't we still wanna know about the traffic impact, or is that not, is that irrelevant in this particular case because of the square footage reduction?
Yes, ma'am. So if, so there's a certain, so in our, so our city engineer has determined that if any commercial development has peak hours, you know, over a hundred, a hundred trips during peak hours, then it requires a traffic impact study, because that threshold is usually to try to determine if there are any kind of excess, you know, any, if there's a need for any traffic mitigation, such as, you know, dedicating right-of-way or doing a deceleration lane. That's just a set standard, I guess, that most engineers have, or traffic engineers have. That's the, that's the reason why it's set at that a hundred trips. So by reducing it to under trips, therefore, it's no longer warranted for a trip, a traffic impact analysis, because they didn't meet that threshold. So it would just be a normal review to the engineer, and there would be no traffic impact analysis for that.
Is there a policy or guideline that prohibit us from asking for a traffic analysis? Or is that?
No, ma'am. There's not, there's not a policy or guideline.
Are we breaking any law if we ask for traffic?
No, 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 no. So, no, the traffic impact analysis is something we ask for, it's not required, but we ask for it because it's in, it's something that we want to do, just to make sure that there's no, there's not any traffic issues that we may overlook. Now, if you, if it's the will of councils to still ask for that, then that's probably means you can. But is, you're not missing any laws. That's something that, that staff has asked them before.
Okay. So, yeah, so we can ask for the traffic analysis?
Yes.
If we wanted to, without prejudicial?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, if this is the time for it. No, go back, you just moved. I know you can barely see it, those list of conditions.
Yes, sir.
Is this in an overlay district?
No, sir, it's not in there.
So it's on the edge of two overlay districts. There are twenty overlay district and a Hidden Hills overlay district. And those overlay districts have a certain list of restrictions. And I know that we did respect the Hidden Hills overlay district when we approved the Belmont development. And these are good, good restrictions. And they do support a lot of what the overlay districts try to do to protect their area. So I just wanted to know if that was the reason why those particular restrictions were placed there. And also, when that Belmont was developed, it was mentioned then that they would make an effort to bring in some commercial development to complement the residential. So is this in conjunction with that?
No, sir. This is a separate entity in itself. This is a private developer who wants to, to a private landlord who wanted to expand from his current location to, to another location. This has nothing to do with Belmont. As far as the, the conditions which our staff has implemented, will ask to, for you guys to consider, the Hidden Hills overlay is something that we, we, we don't, we, well, it's something that we don't acknowledge, 'cause we never adopted the Hidden Hill overlay district. We've only adopted the I twenty overlay district. Some of those conditions are similar to what that, what we have here. Again, it's trying to mirror the same thing as well. That's what staff was trying to do, to kind of mirror the same thing, 'cause again, we don't wanna have too wildly different commercial developments for the area. One, you, you can't do something, and other, you can't do another thing. So staff was attempting to try to kinda, try to, kinda keep a, I think, I'm sorry, I'm looking on the back of.
I mean, no, I think it's a good thing that we have those there, and I think the neighborhood would be better as a result.
On page thirty-three, the state's trip generation report for proposal, Pinola Center. But it says also quality restaurant. Now, what is the definition of a quality restaurant?
Don't really have one in the zoning ordinance. I mean, if.
I mean, are we going by stars? I mean, how are we determining?
That's, that's something that, I guess, the engineer put in. I, I don't have a definition for that. I mean.
Is the engineer here?
Yes, sir. The engineer's here, but he'll be able to speak to that in a minute. As far as quality restaurant, again, the restaurant that the applicant is, went into, wants to open at their location, is the same restaurant that's across in the Shopping Plaza. It is his family restaurant. It's a Mexican restaurant that he wished to relocate right across the street.
I saw Chipotle up there, is that?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know if that's what he, what, what the applicant tends on leasing out this space to.
I'm just referencing. I'm just referencing your slide. I'm just referencing.
I don't, I don't know that. If I could get, bring a Chipotle.
No, no, I'm not saying bring one. I'm just saying, I'm just referencing the slide. That's on record. Referencing the slide. No, that's all I'm saying. Really.
But, I would like to ask, in regards to the location, the current location of this restaurant is outside of the city limits, or is it still? Okay. No, 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 you don't have to show. Because the question is, it is moving from one location in the city.
Yes, sir.
Across the street.
Yes, sir.
Still in the city.
Yes, sir.
So the only difference is the zoning?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
All right, and we're gonna open this for public hearing. I'll take a motion to open for a public hearing.
I make a motion that we open up the public hearing.
For?
I make a motion that we open up the public hearing for RZ dash one-nine-dash-zero-zero-five land use petition at twenty-one ninety-three Pinola Road, R one hundred to C one.
Thank you, councilwoman. Do I have a second? Properly moved and second. All in favor? Properly moved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Public hearing is now open. We will take comments for those that are, almost, sir, almost, um, for those that oppose. Seeing none, we'll take comments from those that are in favor. Sir, you may come forward now.
Honorable mayor, uh, lady and gentleman of council, my name is Tip Hoon, I'm with Alcovi Survey and Engineering.
Sure.
Uh, my client, Mr. Yala, is not, uh, in the country today. Uh, so he asked me to, to step in and, uh, hopefully I can provide, um, whatever information you might, uh, need from me. Uh, uh, picking back on the require, the, the city requires that large development and, and generally, uh, this speaks for, uh, larger development where you generate a lot of traffic, you put in a big, uh, development. You generate a lot of traffic and the way to mitigate the traffics is, uh, or to determine how much traffic is there is, uh, there's a book called I T E. Uh, it's, it's an engineering standard to, to come up with, uh, an estimated, uh, amount of trip that would be generated by those type of businesses. And, uh, your, uh, this, the city ordinance, uh, threshold is one hundred, uh, uh, one hundred, uh, trip, uh, at the peak hours for these type of businesses. And, 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 uh, in regards to the, the, uh, the, uh, quality restaurant is identified by, if you have a sit-down restaurant, then that's qualified as a quality restaurant as opposed to a drive-through or a McDonald's. Uh, and that's how differentiate and that's what the, the, the I T E reference, that's what we use in the report.
So when you reduce the actual size, you can calculate with regards to the amount of cars, um, you know, trips, that, that particular piece of it?
And one of the reason why we decided to lower it down is, uh, the retail spaces were like eighteen, uh, hundred square feet.
Yes, sir.
And most of, uh, what my cli- clients targeting is, is around four hundred to thirteen hundred, about twelve hundred square feet. So we, we take the liberty to, uh, reduce that, uh, just so that we, and, and the site itself is two point something acre where we're not tremendous, uh, generating a tremendous amount of, of traffic where a, a red light or something had to be, uh, implemented in order to mitigate that kind of, uh, traffic generate.
Counsel? Yeah, I'm gonna make him stand there eight minutes.
Well, um.
Anyone else?
I, I, I want to say that, uh, this project is in line with your future, uh, plan, uh, for suburban. We are proposing, uh, a, uh, a commercial project that is locally for, uh, for meet that kind of need. And that, uh, uh, and it's, it's a small, uh, and it's right in line with, uh, with the urban setting that you guys are intended to, to, uh, project for this area. As of right now, uh, the current, uh, uh, the subject, uh, property and the property that's, uh, just north of it, uh, is only, uh, R one hundred in that area. Everything else to the south and everything else encompassing it is already C one. And so we are, uh, in, in a sense that we, we are a, uh, in a pocket zoning right now or, or an isolated zoning right now. And by zoning, um, by approving this zoning, you, you are moving closer to what the city is projecting for this area. Um, and, uh, we have taken liberty to, uh, reach out to the adjacent owners. Uh, we sent out a postcard and invited them to, the restaurant, uh, is the, uh, last, uh, Polinas.
Right.
Uh, is across the, the, the street in that sub, uh, shopping center. And, uh, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Gaither, she's the one that, uh, one, in one of those resident, uh, residential in the, uh, Mailer Trail subdivision. Uh, and she came and she was concerned that, that the restaurant might generate noise, but, uh, we were there and so she was able to, to see the setting that we, we have. And, and that, uh, satisfy her. And, uh, there were no, uh, no other objections, um, from the neighbors. Uh, we have, uh, reached out to everyone and make sure that they, uh, their concerns were heard and, and, uh, we have, uh, we have done our due diligence. We have, um, uh, uh, you know, we, uh, and, and, uh, on the previous, um, on the previous, uh, meeting, uh, the planning commission meeting, we have, uh, uh, you know, we, uh, lowered the, the, the retail spaces down so that we stayed, you know, under the, the traffic, uh, requirements of the city. And so, um, so with that said, uh, I ask that, uh, your honor, mayor and council, uh, approve this project. Make the vibrant community.
Madam clerk, how much time do we have? All right, uh, is there any other people, any other individuals, uh, speaking for this development? Right? Um, sir, you still have, uh, a little, uh, time left, but if you, if you're done, you're done, no problem. Very good. Any questions, counsel?
I think we have to close first, do we?
Nope. He's here, you're actually in the public meeting, you're gonna answer questions. I'll let you have staff questions.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm saying the matter of procedure of public hearing, we close public hearing, then we question, um, if I'm correct on what we adopted.
All right. Stand by, young man. I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Who's to close public hearing, R Z one nine dash zero zero five land use provision, uh, for twenty-one ninety-three Panola Road, R one hundred to C one?
Properly moved, do I have a second?
I second it. Sorry. Did we allow the nays?
We did.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And it was cricket. No one. All right. Let's get out of dodge before the, uh, all right. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we are now closed. The applicant is standing there, so now would be a good time. Mr. George, I mean, councilman, turn.
Uh, no, uh, my question would be more to, uh, staff and, um, Wheeler. Uh, when you say that the, uh, planning commission recommended deferral, did they give any other reason other than they were waiting for the traffic, uh, study?
Just the traffic study.
And, okay. And do you traditionally give that in writing as to your reason for deferring or rejecting an item?
What do you, what do you mean? Is it, uh, do we get it in writing for the reasoning for the planning commission?
From, from the planning commission?
Yes, sir, it usually should be noted in the staff report that, yes, for that, yeah. I mean, I, well, I can, uh, from now on, usually I just recommend, I just write this as deferral, but from now on, I can explain the reason why, if that suits the council, to, to give you more clear, uh, clarity of reasoning why they recommend deferral. If that's so how you guys want me to.
So that one, one reason they had has been satisfied?
Ye- yes, sir, yes, that's, and from my, from my standpoint, yes, sir.
So for clarity, um, um, Mr. Wheeler, you, staff recommends?
Ye- yes, sir, so staff recommends approval. If, staff would have recommended approval if it not need for the, uh, traffic impact analysis. Uh, again, since that trip generation was over, that's why we recommend deferral, just to double check to see if there weren't any need for, uh, traffic mitigation, uh, traffic mitigation plans. Uh, but since they're underneath that threshold, staff was gonna recommend approval. Uh, but I wanted to emphasize that planning commission did recommend deferral based off that premise of a traffic impact analysis.
But then you came back with this.
Yes, sir.
And satisfied staff.
Yes, sir, the applicant, you know, came back in to reduce it, yes, sir.
Excellent. Counsel? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I make a motion that we approve the R Z one dash one nine dash zero zero five land use petition at twenty-one ninety-three Panola Road, R one hundred to C dash one.
I second it.
Properly moved and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Congratulations, sir. So approved. All right, number two, uh, for our new business, uh, is the recommendation for youth services vendor for the upcoming school years at the school program.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council. Sean DePalma for the record, Parks and Recreation Director, excuse me. As we discussed, um, in the work session, uh, we're bringing a recommendation, uh, with the discussions from the work session. The request is to, uh, allow staff, uh, to put together M O U to go with the recommended vendor, which is the YMCA, to provide youth services for the upcoming school year, um, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. That M O U would be based off of the scope of work that we did do in the presentation earlier and the scope of work that was in the, the contract, um, handed out earlier. So we're only going to keep the scope of work to prepare the M O U. So I'm asking for approval to do that and, uh, have the city enter M O U based off of that scope of work with the YMCA.
All right, counsel?
So I just wanted to make a point, so that the council is aware. I had a conversation with Mr. DePalma right after the meeting and I just wanted him to verify and kind of work with our procurement staff and internal auditor to verify that this, the type of service being provided, the after-school care service being provided, is a service that by state procurement law does not require, um, solicitation. So should it not, and we're okay with that, then I have no problem with the M O U, um, as long as that is confirmed, that we have no issue in that solicitation. That solicitation was not required. So I just, I know he and I and Mr. Tippett all kind of had that conversation over here, but I just wanted to make sure and that's kind of why I brought it up in the meeting, um, in the work session meeting. Because we did have a contract for professional services handed to us, which would not be applicable if the after-care service is not required for, is not requi- a solicitation isn't required for it. So I just wanted to try to clear that confusion up, although now that I listen to myself, it's probably more confusing. Um, but, long story.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
We should be okay should that, should we verify that by state procurement law, this service does not require a competitive bid?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Carbo, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Um, I know you looked at the M O U, uh, I'm sorry, that we looked at, the contract for professional services. You had a, a issue with number four, the price. Uh, will, um, what you guys discussed, would that be, um, addressed, uh, in regards to the M O U?
To clarify that, the M O U would be using, utilizing the information that was presented to you and that information presented to you based off the recommendation, the YMCA, there is no monetary exchange of funds. So that would be written into the M O U, yes, sir. And that, that document is a, a more efficient, uh, utensil to execute this task that we're requesting tonight.
Hey, quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we voting to approve an M O U that you're gonna put together? Because what I have in front of me is not an M O U and I understand what my colleagues are saying, but I don't know what's gonna be in that M O U.
Okay, so let me clarify. What, what I'm asking you to approve tonight is, one, the recommended vendor, which would be the YMCA, under the conditions that I presented earlier to you in work session. Once that, that is within the approval, that we would take those conditions and put them in the M O U so that the city manager can execute a, an, that mutual, um, agreement, understanding with the YMCA to provide, provide these services for the children of Stonecrest on August fifth. If we don't get that tonight, we don't provide services to the children of Stonecrest on August fifth, the beginning of school, the first day of school.
Okay, um, so I understand that. So the vote tonight is a conditional vote because?
Ma'am, if I may, uh, and, and, and this may really be the worst move I've made, but I think substantively, we're gonna take the contract, the contract for professional services, we're gonna change the title of it, the memorandum of understanding, it's gonna be the same document, basically, we're just gonna call it by a different name. Now, I'm sure there might be one or two little changes, but again, substantively, I think it's the same thing.
But it would be based off the information and only the information that was presented to you, which is the fixed amount, the vendor providing the service, the time of services, the charge that they're gonna be, um, advertising and charging parents, the, uh, state program caps in line with it and the amount of money that they're gonna be spending on the program and we are not going to be receiving any invoices or paying any amount. There's no monetary exchange.
Got it, but is this coming back to the council after we vote tonight?
No, ma'am, this would be empowering the staff and the city manager to execute the M O U that the attorneys would put together based off the, all the information, only the information presented to you this evening.
At no cost. Repeat, at no cost.
I don't know what you mean by that.
I think, I think.
I'm not clear that, I don't know what you mean by that.
Well, the, the fees that Y is gonna charge is what's gonna fund the program, we're never gonna have to write them a check.
Right, but I think what the concern may be, just to make certain that we're all on the same page, it's not the at no cost part, it is in the writing part. And so we just want something in writing and what we're trying to do to make certain that everything move along, you know, without any hic- hiccups, is to make certain that we know what it is that's gonna be reduced to writing. And so with that in mind, would, would this be a good summary of those things? Now, I know that you, you did a presentation. Uh, unless I'm mistaken, I don't have a copy of that presentation, but the presentation included everything that you need, but it's just a good summary?
Yes, sir.
Including the price, which is no price, at no cost.
Well, well, that M O U would include what the vendor is going to charge, what is expected of the vendor, the timeframes that, to provide the services, the type of services which were, um, such as the dinner, the hot meal at night, all of those stipulations that we presented to you and are more detailed in that, um, document that you just held up.
How hard would it be to put something together real quick and send it to council so we can just, you know, move this along tonight?
Hold on.
All right.
Does anybody disagree with me that in essence, all we're gonna do is take the contract for professional service off the top and change it to a memorandum of understanding? Is that, is, it's more to it than that?
No, I do disagree, I disagree with that and I'm not ready to move forward based on your comment.
I apologize, councilwoman, I apologize, I, I interrupted you while I was talking. I apologize. Uh, councilwoman, I'll tell them to finish what you were saying.
I was letting the city manager know in all due respects, um, I, I disagree with him and, um, I like what Councilman Clinton said. If we could get something, um, quickly drawn up in writing saying that the vote tonight is for, um, the professional services contract to be replaced with the M O U describing the terms of all parties. I don't, I don't feel comfortable and I'm not gonna vote on something and say, y'all just run with it, no, I'm not doing that.
How about if you, would it be possible, ma'am, if you posed that as the?
As I'll make that in a motion.
The motion to vote on.
Yes.
That we do exactly what you said, which was create an M O U based off of that.
Here's what, let me read it, here's what I'd like to see happen.
Okay, wait, no, are you gonna make the motion?
Let me finish.
I've got some, I've got some vital information that's gonna change your motion.
I will, I'd like to finish and then you can add whatever you want, councilwoman, I'm willing to.
Okay.
I'm flexible, I just wanna finish what I was saying. So what I was saying is, why don't we make a motion to vote for the professional services contract that we have in front of us to be replaced with an M O U from you, from your department, describing and outlining the terms of all parties. I can be comfortable with that, but I'm, I'm not comfortable with the other side.
So I was just informed because I had asked for one of your staff members and for our internal auditor and procurement manager to verify that service to be provided did not require solicitation. So the state law does say that the only way that it doesn't require a solicitation is if there are certified teachers. So if the YMCA is providing certified teachers, then we do not have to bid that out. If they're not gonna have certified teachers, is, it needs to be, there needs to be a solicitation for it. So do we know today if the YMCA has certified, are providing certified teachers?
So to clarify that, yes, there are certified, um, teachers in the program and according to you would, our auditor is saying that it would align with that, um, stipulation within the law.
Okay, so they are providing certified teachers?
Within that program, yes.
So we definitely need that to be written into the M O U? So we definitely need that to be written into the MOU along with summary that Councilman Clinton provided. But obviously, most importantly, we need to make sure that they're, they're required to have certified teachers. Did it men, did it stipulate the minimum amount or is there a ratio?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so as long as that's written and obviously they have to agree to that.
The exception to the bid process is that it's an educational services, educational service, which is part of this service under the steam component and that, that service is headed by a certified teacher, certified by the Georgia Professional Standards.
Which they are, yes, ma'am.
So it'd be really good to have the code stated in the MOU.
Correct.
That both parties are very clear. Just sometimes there is a different kind of certification. I'm, I'm not deep into the education system, but there is some differences in professional standard certification versus the other kind. So if, if when we write it and our attorneys vet it, make sure that that language is written in there and obviously they have to agree to that.
Okay, the, the YMCA has agreed to it as we were speaking of it, we confirmed that.
Why they're here?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Oh, look at you, I'm a girl.
I'm sorry, yes, I apologize, yes, ma'am. So we, we did confirm that, so we do have certified teachers on the staff and then we'll have the attorneys write that in the MOU. So is it possible at this time to get a motion to approve an MOU with those stipulations and the criteria that Councilman Clinton pointed out and is documented in the packet and to be approved tonight by council?
For this vendor?
For this particular vendor, which is the South DeKalb YMCA.
So if I.
Got a question.
Do I understand you are going to try to get that written tonight?
No, sir. It's not possible to get it written tonight, I have asked their attorney. They would need several hours, you know, to make sure we get these stipulations, do the research of the items that was just presented and ensure that the MOU is still in the, with leverage within the city of Stonecrest. We wanna make sure that we're not giving any footing away as far as our, our, the mitigation of legality there. So it'll be a full day of, till we get one.
Then this puts us back where we've been before. On the first of the month, we're not gonna have anything in place for the kids.
Absolutely, and that's not gonna happen, this is what's gonna happen.
That's what, that's, that's, that's what I wanna know.
So here's what, here's what's gonna happen. We've explained this to explanatory way that we can. Now, what we have to happen, what has to happen, what we have to have, what has to happen is exactly what Mr. DePalma, DePalma is asking for, which is, we have a document, we have a team of lawyers, we have a city manager, we have council. We cannot not do this and show up August fifth for four hundred mad parents and eight hundred mad kids. It's not gonna happen. So with that, we have enough brainpower sitting up here between the ten or twelve of us to come to an agreement that we vote on tonight so that they can draft the, the agreement or finish drafting the agreement for tomorrow and they can send it out to us. But what I want to remind council respectfully, it is not our job to negotiate contracts. That is the purchasing agent, the city manager and his staff. Now, we get input, thus we should have input, but this is not our charter. We wanna take the documents down to the last end of it and start negotiating and changing it. That's not our charter, it's not our job, it's not our responsibility. That's what we pay them for. What we get paid to do is to make sure that it's, that, that we're all in compliance legislatively and that we're not, of course, breaking the law because we have an attorney here and then move forward from there and to take care of the citizens of Stonecrest. So respectfully, council, what we need to do is to find the language in our motion that we're comfortable with so we can approve this tonight to be able to get this done. And I'm willing to take the motion from, from anybody.
I'll make the motion. I'm gonna make a motion that we vote for the professional services contract to be replaced with an MOU describing and defining the terms of all parties.
Go have a second.
If, if you can add the vendor's name, just for clarity, so that we, you know.
The boys and girl, I mean.
YMCA.
I'm gonna make the motion, okay, I'm gonna make the motion for a professional services contract to be replaced with an MOU describing and the, describing the terms and the conditions of all parties for the Metro or the Browns.
YMCA.
Oh, not the same, the Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, it's YMCA, YMCA.
The Y M, YMCA, okay. All right, y'all give me one more chance at this, it's late.
Councilwoman, it is late.
I'm gonna do it one more chance.
We will bear with you, ma'am.
The Y W C A.
Add the attorney bidding.
Y M or Y W C A. Okay, I'm gonna make the motion that we vote for the professional services contract to be replaced with an MOU describing and defining the terms of all parties for the Y M C A, Y M C A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, Mr. DePalma.
Mr. Mayor.
You're gonna unravel it, aren't you?
Just to, just to clarify, it would be the South DeKalb YMCA, but I did want, if you would, hold to me for one moment.
Yes, sir.
I apologize for this chaos in this matter. There's been several moving parts.
Not a problem, Mr. DePalma.
Uh, use of attorneys properly. So I, I will take responsibility for that and I apologize to both you and the council and all the citizens that are present at this time.
Not, not apology, not necessary, but thank you, sir.
One, one other item, just briefly and I, again. Earlier, you made comment about my staff and how diligent they work. We've been working on a monthly memo that would go out through the city manager's office to mayor and council. If, if you would let, allow me to pass that out to you right now, it was just a synopsis of things that go on so you can see the story of the department and what's going on with the department. Every month, we'll issue this out to you. It'll give you financial captions, participation caption, but it'll actually show you who we meet with, what we're executing and it's broken down into our sections, programming, future innovation, operations, onboarding of, of different programs and softwares and so forth. And, and individuals that we meet with, community groups that we're working with.
We'll take it, sir, appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Let's give Mr. DePalma a round of applause. Thank you, sir. Number three, SPOLOSP paving, phase two.
Alrighty, mayor and council, I've already presented the award letter written by our city engineer, Ken Hildebrandt. And so once I want to reiterate, I recommend that the bid awarded for the phase two of the SPOLOSP paving for twenty nineteen to be awarded to Blunt Construction in the amount of two million, two hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents.
All right, council? Any questions for Mr. Joyner? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion for the approval. Oh, let's not be gun shy now, hold on one second.
I got one quick question.
Get the number, let's get the number right first, hold on one second.
There's no phase number.
Yeah.
Hold on one second here, Mr. Joyner. Couple of trees I need to cut down.
Four page twenty-seven.
The page.
Hold me, council?
Before page twenty-seven.
Four page twenty-seven. All right, council, I'd like to move that we approve Blunt Construction for the SPOLOSP phase two paving at two million, two hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Probably moving in second, now we can go into discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How can we get a printout of the, I guess, the expenditures on the SPOLOSP paving since initiation? Cause this is phase two and it would've been nice to just see, you know, Mr. Joyner, what we've done for phase one, where we are with, with the pending amounts. And I know you issued something once about a month ago, so I'd like to see an update on that.
Okay, yes, I've been making a monthly update and posting it to our website. So I, I, when, when I make that update for, for this month, for, for July, we should be getting our numbers, actually, actually in a few days for our June expenditures. I'll make sure I send, send it updated, a report to, to the council.
Okay, council, anyone else?
Just quickly, you've already mentioned it somewhat, but the recommendation for Blunt, I see that price-wise, they are a little bit, but is there anything else that was really driving Blunt?
Uh, to, to be honest, this, this was sent out as an invitation to bid and normally, we, we do, we have a preferred vendors list of companies we send this to. And so we have about twenty companies that, that we, that we send our bid out to and three, these three companies were off of that vendors list. And so these are all competent, highly sought-after companies. They're all G dot certified companies and so they can all do the work. So our, our, our process is basically on, on the cost of, of the amount. And so we look for the low bid that comes in on this, on these, on these types of projects.
Well, they were essentially equal and they just had the low bid.
Correct, correct. And it just so happens, Blunt Construction is the company that was doing our phase one and as, as, as I told you before, I invite you to go out and check out the roads that have already been done. As, as the mayor said, it's like you're driving on glass now.
Very impressive, very impressive. All right, council, anymore? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, let's have it. Thank you, Mr. Joyner, very good work, sir, very good work. All right, we go to the Magical Parks IGA.
Uh, once again, I come, come before you with the IGA between, actually, it's the Intergovernmental Agreement for the Transfer of Park Property between DeKalb County, Georgia and the City of Stonecrest, Georgia. As explained earlier, this, the park properties shall be transferred and conveyed from the county to the city via quick claim deed, subject to the provisions herein, in exchange for goods and valuable consideration and payment to the county in the, in the amount of one hundred dollars per acre pursuant to Georgia Code thirty-six dash thirty-one dash eleven dot one. Just bring to your attention that, that this IGA is looking for us to acquire eight parks in the amount of three hundred and forty-nine point five acres.
Also told acres again, Mr. Joyner?
Thirty-four, uh, excuse me, three hundred forty-nine point five acres.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Joyner, for clarity, because we got questions on this earlier, I wanna make sure that council and deputy city manager and the city manager are on the same page. These are for the parks that we talked about, exclusive of Browns Mill Water Park because they're going through the, um, almost through the early fall where they have operation with regards to that, which is good for us. And two, exclusive of Arabian National Mountain Park. However, just for right now, we will be engaging in negotiations with DeKalb County for Arabia. We still will be pursuing that, we just didn't wanna hold this up any further. And we've come to the realization that this is gonna take more time to negotiate that particular entity because it may involve one party, two parties, or possibly three parties. All right, so I open it up to council.
When, sorry, don't do that, please. Okay, I wanna, I wanna go back to my question that originated with the, the shared maintenance plan that you discussed. Trying to see if, what is the possibility of adding a con, a condition that would say that the agreement is subject to the finalization of the shared maintenance plan approved by both the county and the city for an extended timeframe so that we're not rushed and in fire drill mode to create a real workable plan that works for both the county and the city? Cause Arabian Mountain is there and we both have to own it. But I'm afraid if we just move for it with a blank check with no idea as to what this looks like. We don't have to work out everything, but just some of the things that we know need to be done right away. Who's gonna do that?
Okay, councilwoman, the reason why Arabian Mountain is not in this agreement is for that very reason. So that we can get, so that we can reach agreement and, and start working it and, and get, reach a basis here. As soon as Arabian Mountain becomes part of the conversation, it, it completely changes the complete landscape and as soon as, as soon as we removed it, we were able to, to reach this agreement. And so I, I do understand your trepidation, but this is something we've been working on for over a year and trying, trying to nail this, nail this thing down. And the only way we could reach this agreement was by keeping Arabian Mountain out of this agreement. But we have every assurance from the county that they intend to work with us. It is, it is at the city's discretion, the city has every right to acquire Arabian Mountain or any other park property that, that's not included in this agreement at one hundred dollars per acre. So we, at any time, we can just, just go ahead and, and do the quick claim deed and, and acquire Arabian Mountain. We wanna work with DeKalb County, that we've, we've tried our best to, to accommodate that and, and to be cooperative throughout this entire process. So the only way we could get to this point and to, and actually, as I stated, this version of the, of the IGA is going before the Board of Commissioners tomorrow. I've been trying to get this on their, on their docket for, for over a year now. And so we finally got it on there. We, we needed to do this in order to be able to get our, get ourselves in place in order to start our after-school program, whi- which is, which is gonna be starting in, in a couple of weeks as well. So it is, it is vitally imperative that we go ahead and move forward with this. And right on the heels of this, we will then approve, we have a couple of other IGAs as well as, as address the issue of Arabian Mountain, DeKalb County.
Okay, and I'm assuming that you've already crunched the numbers with the the maintenance that's required on the facilities that we are taking over immediately because all of those were negative items on the county's budget and that we've looked at particularly Everett, the takeout and take-in for canoeing and boating and things like that. You know, it just would've just been nice to see some type of analysis of the cost for the maintenance so that we can have a beautiful city that's well-maintained and not have a shortfall of a budget to make sure that we can make it beautiful and it's not quite there yet, we're getting there. So I just wanna make sure we have enough funding to go in there and do what we need to do.
And no doubt, if you recall, last year, while we were working on this, we did do an exhaustive study. Actually Jacobs paid for and an examination of, of, of the entire Browns Mill facility that include the rec center, the aquatic center and the fields as well. And so we, we have very good numbers as to what it's gonna take to run, to run this park system. But we're gonna have to take a phased approach and we'll, we'll just nibble at this, you know, one day at a time and, and, and your, your, your points are well taken. This has been taken into an account. Mr. DePalma has been working diligently, this is all his department is working on, is, is getting our park system together. You may have noticed that we did, were planning to bring a parks master. Um, you may have noticed that we did, uh, were planning to bring a Parks Master Plan before you, uh, today. Uh, we're, we're not quite ready to, uh, present that, but, uh, at a, at an upcoming meeting, we'll also be presenting that. The Parks Plan will actually encompass all of the parks here in Stonecrest, and, and we'll have a plan, uh, not only just a maintenance plan, but also a, a capital investment plan for our parks and, and for something that, that we can truly be proud of here, here in the city of Stonecrest.
Mr. Joyner?
Joyner? In regards to the, um, the IGA, when you look at, um, if you don't mind, it's just a matter of curiosity, and I'm pretty certain there's a, a pretty decent explanation for it, probably a legal issue, but when you look at Article Two, two-point-two, Sections B and C, uh, both of those speaks to when the City of Stonecrest would take over the parks, uh, uh, providing the IGA goes through. Seems like we're talking about August first and September, you know, so, but, which is great, and that's perfect. My, uh, concern though, or my curiosity is why then on, um, two-point-four, where it says, um, this is in Article Two, two-point-four, it talks about the property to quit claim portion will occur at some point by January, uh, first or December thirty-first. I- is there a legal reasoning for that time lapse, or?
Oh, another lawyer jumps out of the audience.
Hi, Honorable Maria Hazard. Um, so the, the discrepancy between the two is that the IGA addresses two things. One is the park purchases, so who actually owns the park, and the second is the park services, who's providing the maintenance and the other park services. And so what the IGA says, that Stonecrest will need to purchase the parks, that two-point-four you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Stonecrest will need to purchase the parks on or before January first, twenty-twenty, but they will need to take over the park services on August first for all of the parks except for the Browns Mill Aquatic Center, which is October first. So they're working, the, the ownership of the park and the providing the park services work separately, and that's why we have the IGA.
So we're not at risk, um, you know, after the fight, we take over the park, we start putting money and work into it, and then at some point in time, there is a problem with the quick claim?
There will not be a problem.
Okay. Because you said so, I believe you.
Yeah.
All right.
Appreciate that.
Okay, we're still in discussion phase, any more questions?
So we're looking at, what, thirty-five grand for this?
Uh, yes, it looks, uh, just at thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
The swing set that, that Browns Mill Park would cause that, so we are getting a monster of a deal.
And, and, and keep, keep in mind, we, we did, we did budget to purchase, uh, Arabia Mountain as well, so that, that was, that was budgeted, and that would be another, another two hundred and seventy thousand, so.
So, do we intend to just hold that and move it to next fiscal year, or are there plans?
Uh, uh, that, that, that will be part, a- as, uh, as, uh, Councilwoman DeDoma alluded to, uh, that, that will be part of our negotiations. Uh, the, the plan, uh, and we've, we've had some extensive discussions with, uh, Zach Williams, the COO of DeKalb County, and so the, the, the desire of the county is to enter in a, a negotiated agreement with Stonecrest to run Arabia Mountain.
About how many acres is the aquatic center?
Uh, actually, the, uh, Browns Mill is, uh, the entire, uh, parcel is actually includes all of the, includes the rec center, the aquatic center, and the fields that, that go along with it, so.
Okay, so that number includes the aquatic center, okay, we're just not taking over the service?
Yeah, so, so, uh, to Anna Maria's, uh, point, Ms. Hazard's point, we're purchasing the prop, we're purchasing the property on August first. We'll be starting provide the service on the aquatic center on October first.
Okay. All right. Um, as we conclude our discussion, part of the motion, live motion is actually on the table, so all in favor? Aye? All opposed? Excellent. Mr. Joyner, thank you very much, sir. Uh, we will move to old business for SLUP nineteen zero-zero-one, personal care home, thirty-three seventeen.
Excuse me, mayor?
Oh, apologize, apologize.
I didn't get the motions on that.
Oh, yeah, uh, so the discussion went so long that, uh,
Yes.
Yeah, so the motion was to, um, to approve, uh, the actual IGA itself.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion, and then I think Clinton seconded it, yeah, then, um, Councilman Clinton seconded it.
Thank you.
You're good, all right.
Good evening, counsel.
Mr. Wheeler.
Uh, this application was originally heard at the April twenty-second city council meeting. Um, staff was directed to, uh, to get, uh, to provide a detailed history of events leading up to the, to applicant coming before the city council. Uh, staff went back again to try to get more, uh, information, uh, from DeKalb County regarding the applicant's, uh, next-door neighbor. Uh, everything should be in your packet, uh, my correspondence from DeKalb County, um, the, uh, correspondence, uh, this is a license application that the applicant's, uh, neighbor has filed for, um, as well as, uh, the state permit and email correspondence I had, uh, uh, that the applicant's neighbor has submitted back to me as well. Uh, if you want me to kind of go over, uh, kind of do a refresher of how we got here, I can do that, or if you have any questions from me. Okay. All right, so the applicant, Ms. Matthews, uh, came into, uh, has applied for a special land use permit to operate a personal care home. Uh, during that process around September, Ms. Matthews was having her, uh, neighborhood meeting. Ms. Matthews' neighbor came to the meeting and led her and told her that she actually has a personal care home as well. Uh, this, Ms. Matthews informed me, uh, that, uh, that there's a personal care home located right next door to her. So staff went back and saw that actually the, 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 the neighbor was actually, uh, was actually a licensed, uh, personal care home taker, uh, by this, uh, by the state. Uh, so staff informed, uh, Ms. Matthews that it probably would not be likely if she could move forward with her application due to the minimum distance requirement that is in the zoning ordinance, uh, that minimum distance is a thousand feet. Uh, after, uh, after lengthy discussions, uh, with, uh, city staff and city attorney, uh, this, uh, staff decided to allow the applicant to proceed with this application and come for the city council, uh, for approval of her application. And so for rear right, she, therefore, we're here where we are now, uh, trying to determine if, uh, whose application, uh, if, if Ms. Matthews' application should be approved, even though, uh, at the time, Ms. Matthews, uh, believed that there wasn't another personal care home located right next door to her.
Councilwoman.
Chris, can you mention the part where we had given Ms. Roomba?
Yes, so as a part of a, uh, as part of a kind of a sweeping change that the staff has decided, uh, staff decided to send out, uh, a letters, uh, to all the existing personal care homes that we knew of, based off the state's website, that everybody who was operating a personal care home within the city limits of Stonecrest did not have a business license, they had up to, uh, up to, I think, the end of June to apply for a business license. Uh, previously, DeKalb County did not issue any business license for personal care homes for three or less. Due to the recent text amendments that, uh, staff, uh, were, did you guys approve, it doesn't really matter if you're taking care of three, two, or one. If you're operating a personal care home in the city of Stonecrest, you have to have a business license and you have to have a SLUP. Uh, right now, staff is trying to determine who all in the city limits who are not op, who are operating a personal care home do not have a business license, so that's why we're asking everybody to come in and apply for a business license for the two thousand nineteen business license. Uh, staff will then determine if those who have been operating, uh, before, uh, recent, uh, the text change, if they would be required to get a, a, a personal, I mean, a SLUP application, which Ms. Matthews is currently applying for right now. Uh, and Ms. Roomba was in, was, was in the, uh, I'm sorry, the, the neighbors, uh, uh, the applicant's neighbor, uh, was in, was one of those who had been operating a personal care home, uh, with, within DeKalb County, who did, was not required to obtain a business license, uh, to operate a personal care home. However, the state still issue, uh, licenses to, to anybody who's operating a personal care home for three or less.
So she does have state license?
Uh, yes, sir, it's, uh, it, she, uh, from what we gathered, uh, it was, uh, issued to her on August, oh, well, the actual permit that we have that's in your packet, uh, was issued to her August seventh of two thousand eighteen. Uh, she does have some email correspondence, uh, from the state saying that she did her annual, uh, uh, renewal, uh, but the only permit that we have on file that I could find was the actual permit that I saw in, uh, for August seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, if you don't mind, may I ask you, please, uh, would this require a public hearing? Would this SLUP require a public hearing? Yes, uh, this, the item that we're speaking of now? Or, but not this particular item? Correct, okay.
Already done it.
All right.
Uh, just to, for the record, uh, staff did make an original recommendation of denial of the application. Uh, staff would like to amend that and recommend approval in light of everything that both applicants have done to try to, uh, work towards it. Uh, staff feels like the only right thing to do is to recommend approval of the application, because again, it is a, a unique situation. Uh, so staff would recommend that you guys approve that, um, in detail, in detail, I mean, in detail, I mean, and dictate how many people, uh, they can take care of depending on how you feel.
Yeah, uh, I would have to say this has been a very unique situation to give it a minimal description. Um, we, we were definitely in the middle of making text amendments to the personal care home qualifications, um, because DeKalb County did not, um, permit, uh, three hu, three occupants or less. Um, it was not required for Ms. Roomba to have a SLUP from DeKalb County, so it was almost impossible for us to identify her as a personal care home until it was time for her to get a SLUP, which would have been after we changed the, made the text amendment. So it really just got caught in the whirlwind of changes, um, and just tracking down history. I do appreciate, um, both Ms. Roomba and Ms. Matthews for bearing with us as we try to do all the due diligence we could to, to verify, um, validity of all documentation. Um, so, I don't know if we want to ask for a discussion or not, but I do have a recommendation for a motion. So I would like to put a motion on the floor that we approve the application for Ms. Matthews, um, or SLUP. SLUP nineteen to dash zero-zero-one.
All right, properly moved in second, any further discussion?
Uh, just one quick question of the attorney, uh, this, has this become president setting in any way? Okay, so.
Uh, I'll wait, I'll make, I'll ask my question after you guys, your, your motion.
All right, been properly moved in second, we're in discussion.
Uh, my, my, uh, my, uh, question was, uh, if you could, uh, if, well, again, my, it all depends on if you guys approve or deny Ms. Ms. Matthews', uh, application, that's, that's why I'm gonna wait till you guys make your.
Okay, good deal, all right, uh, haven't seen that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, uh, so my question is, uh, if you, if, is, will the council, uh, Ms. Roomba still has her business license application that still needs to be approved? Uh, if it's the will of the council, did you want me to sign off on her application, because I still have that? And I want to know if you, what you guys want us to do with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, I want you to give Mr. Wheeler a round of applause, because he is, let me tell you, he is a city planner and he's the planning director at the same time. Uh, he is one of the smartest young guys I've ever met with regards to knowing his business and, and being thorough. Um, um, and he has the temperament for a long, long career, you know, in this business. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler, we appreciate that.
If I can, if I can add a comment, if you don't mind?
Yes, ma'am.
About that we are working, and Chris and his team are working very diligently to identify all personal care homes that are in the city limits, regardless of the amount of residents that they have, so that we can mitigate these kind of issues going forward, so that whenever someone does put an application in, that we can identify if there's another home within a thousand feet, and just to really try our very best, as Chris and his team have done, so that we don't have to worry about who's right, who's wrong, who was there first, who wasn't, this is just some city startup situations that occur, but we are working very hard to mitigate any future cases like this, not to say that there won't be a few more here and there, especially when word gets out that we just did this, um, but just know that we're working very hard to minimize that as much as possible. And again, shout out to Chris and his team, because I gave him the blues, um, all the way through about digging as deep as he possibly could to find all documents. Um, so thank you again, and hold on with us, we're working through it.
Excellent.
If I can add?
Yes, sir.
You know, I know we did the right thing, but I want to make sure, as the attorney said, that this is not president setting. If there's anything we need to add to make sure that this doesn't wind up being used against us in some other case, that we go ahead and put those things in place.
There's one thing, if you all don't mind, and I appreciate comments from counsel. Think about your day, day of need one day. Better start considering that, too, because your, your day is coming, just live long enough. And this was an opportunity to, 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 and thank you, councilwoman, to, to be courageous and fix these things across the board. Um, I'll leave that the way it is. Mr. Wheeler, did you have something else? I saw you, oh, good deal, all right, thank you. Hotel motel tax ordinance, second reading?
Mayor, it's an ordinance to provide for the collection of a, a hotel motel tax and the use of the proceeds, uh, from such tax as authorized under Charter, I assume, Chapter thirteen, Section fifty-one, or Title forty-eight of the Official Code of Georgia annotated, to provide for severability, to repeal conflicting ordinances, uh, to provide for an effective date and for other purposes. Mr. Mayor, we've already done the first read, if it's, uh, the will and pleasure of the council, uh, you may approve this, uh, item tonight. Just, I, I note also that, um, uh, we had forwarded our, um, provisions to the city manager, and I believe they reflected herein, so. Uh, if it's the pleasure of the council, you're good to go.
All right, the city manager, we good?
Sir.
Okay, then I'm going to move that we accept, uh, the hotel motel tax ordinance, uh, as read.
I second it.
Properly moved in second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? So pass. Uh, folks, this moves us from five percent to eight percent, and, um, that's going to do really, really well for us, really well here in the city of Stonecrest. We have some special plans for that plus three. All right, um, we have no need for executive session, uh, Madam Clerk?
I just want to clarify, that's going to go into effect as of September first.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, our code enforcement manager has already agreed to notify all the hotels and motels of the change and give them the updated forms.
Excellent, thank you, Madam Clerk. Yes, they will be. The city manager.
Mayor, I don't really have anything, other than I just want to thank all of you, all of the council, for your patience and understanding on, uh, especially on these parks issues, as we've been trying to navigate this, as, as y'all have too. So thanks for your patience and understanding on that, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. The city attorney?
I have nothing on that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman DeDoma?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, on August ninth, we have, um, the one hundred women, one hundred million dollar project, which is a project to work with women entrepreneurs, um, across the state of Georgia, but particularly here in Stonecrest. We, um, have a big event at the Salem Panola Library, it's going to be from ten to two P M. Um, we are in collaboration and have invited SBA and the Minority Business Development, um, Center and several other partners. So if you're interested in learning more about government contracting, hub zone, enterprise zone, opportunity zone, with a lot of great women entrepreneurs, should come out and join us, August ninth at Salem Panola, ten A M.
Councilman.
Um, just to mention that another one of our community leaders, uh, was involved in an automobile accident, which causes him to have a, uh, card, going to cardiac arrest, and we lost him, he was the president of the Harbor Mills Homeowners Association. His name was Mr. Brandon Brandall Adam, and I will attend his funeral tomorrow at, uh, Green Forest. Um, and also to mention, in our neighborhood, Salem, uh, the Salem, uh, Middle School, uh, last year, their band went to, um, Carnegie Hall and performed well and represented the city of Stonecrest. Some of them are involved in the Macy's Day Parade that's going to take place in, uh, November, and working with the MLK High School and the middle school. Uh, so we're working to make that happen. In addition to that, these young kids from, uh, Salem Middle School have a baseball team. That baseball team is invited- That baseball team is invited to the Cooper Town Hall of Fame Tournament. And, uh, we, Councilman Robton and I sold them off last weekend and they are now playing, well, today is their first game and they were tied before rain out. And, um, it's a great honor for them to have been invited to participate and it's, um, when I go home, it's a one game elimination, so we don't know how it finished or if they were totally rained out, but we'll keep you informed and when they come home, we'd like to receive them and have them here for recognition, Mr. Mayor. If we could make that happen, they should be coming home this weekend and we'll try to schedule them for the next council meeting.
Excellent.
So, um, this past weekend, right here at city hall, last weekend, uh, I would like to, um, give out, uh, shout outs to Mr. Al Franklin and the city of Stonecrest for pulling off one of the better church summits that I've seen quite some time, yeah? Uh, we had, uh, quite a turnout from, and a, a, a good representation of churches around the city of Stonecrest. Um, uh, you know, for folks who don't know how, or, you know, we don't have these meetings sort of like in private, the city don't. Uh, they're normally advertised on next door and I know this was advertising on common ground and it, you know, most of these meetings are open to the public. Uh, my own personal meeting will, uh, my, uh, district meeting, uh, I call it the community leaders meeting. Uh, it will take place, um, uh, we, we took a month off for the 4th of July, but we will be back on track, uh, on the first Saturday in August and we're looking at the AEI Startup Factory. We're starting at 10 o'clock AM until 12:30. And, uh, so I'm inviting you guys out to ask any questions, y'all, any questions you ask will be answered candidly and accurately. And if I can't tell you the truth, I just make up something. I'm joking, that was a joke. Just checking to see if he was listening. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Alright.
I'm good. Apparently the power is out at my house, according to Georgia Power.
Young people challenges, I love it. I'll make it brief, councilwoman, I'll make it brief. Um, on July 30th here, uh, city hall is our Red Cross National Drive that we've been pushing for. So if you can spare a pint, please come by and, uh, uh, whole pint, uh, and plasma. We learned a lot about, you can separate all these things while you're sitting in the chair. That is something to see. Um, and, um, uh, Councilman Clinton is, 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 um, he was definitely correct. This, this church event was just unbelievable and, um, just a lot of hard work by, uh, Mr. Franklin and his one man team. Um, um, but I, 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 I do want to thank, uh, our senior staff here that we have, um, Mr. John or Mr. Jackson and our city clerk. They, I, I wish I could tell you all the amount of hours they put in and how they work and how they collaborate and how they, uh, get things done. Um, of course, along with our, uh, uh, city attorney and his team also, it's a, the heavy lifting is just beyond what you all could imagine. Um, people are fussing at us, the county's fussing at us, they want to hold on to the land, we gotta hold them down to the ground to get the land. It just comes with a lot of work, but, uh, I know these people greatly and they wouldn't do anything else but this. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge you all and you're doing a fantastic job and we, we, we really appreciate it and, 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 and folks, we should give them a, we should give them an applause for sure. And not to mention they have to put up with me every day, um, and Bernie. I'll take a motion for adjournment. Yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, you can go home now.
It's not even nine o'clock. I'm gonna wait until nine o'clock. I'm gonna wait three minutes.
I'll tell y'all now.